... by Pastor Steve Jolly of Freemason Street Baptist Church, please. Please stand, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
May we pray. Eternal Creator, as we come before you this day, we come with hearts grateful for the land that we call our own, particularly this marvel of beauty we know as Norfolk, for the waters of commerce and recreation we love, the symphony for our senses in land and sky, and just the pure delight we have in living here. And so we lift to you the word thanks. We give thanks for the rich history of this area and our nation, for those who have sacrificed so much that we may live in liberty, and designed a government that rules not based on a divine right of kings, but from the consent of the governed. And so we lift our voices in thanksgiving. And so, great God, we ask your blessing of wisdom and insight on this council as it seeks the highest good for this city. As they lead, we citizens, we ask you nudge them towards using their work to mold this city into a place where this nation's ideals of equality and fairness and justice and respect are fully known. Move us toward your ideal of love which transforms enemies into friends and can bind us together as one people, regardless of race or class, gender, religion, or barrier of any sort. In this moment, we lift this prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here. The motion is dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. For your benefit, the process which we will follow for the night's agenda is the first thing we're going to do is take up public hearings. There are seven public hearings on the docket tonight. At the conclusion of all the public hearings, we're going to move directly to the consent agenda. There are a couple of matters there. The council may vote on all of those matters in just the way they, in fact, there are only two matters there. The council could vote on both of those in just one vote. We'll then move directly to the regular agenda. There are nine or 10 items there. We've had a couple of add-ons tonight. We'll vote again on all those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address a city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must first sign a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in rear of the council chambers before the meeting began. Okay, now, let's call public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to receive nominations for the appointment of four school board members.
Okay, this is that moment that the law requires, this council has scheduled the public hearing this evening to hear names placed in nomination for people who may want to serve on the school board. The law requires that in order for the city council to consider anyone for an appointment to the council, to the school board, that their name must be mentioned at this public hearing tonight. So, we have a number of people who have signed up. They are up for reappointment, and I mentioned their names. James Driggers, Dr. Kirk Houston, Steve Tomlinson, Karen Jones Squires, who was on the board, has elected not to have her name placed in nomination tonight. Conrad Greif, please. When I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, give us your full name and your address, and then, please, try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, and council members. My name is Conrad Greif, and I live at 100 East Ocean View Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. I am honored this evening to nominate Dr. Warren A. Stewart for an upcoming position on the Norfolk City School Board. Dr. Stewart was born in Norfolk, grew up in Ocean View, graduated from Norfolk Public Schools, and earned a master's in reading from Old Dominion University, and an education doctorate of curriculum degree from the University of Virginia. Dr. Stewart is retired from the superintendent of Goochlin County Public Schools, and at present is the president of AARP of Virginia. Dr. Stewart has many other attributes which are on his resume, and I will give these to the clerk at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hughes.
Good evening. My name is David Hughes, and I live at 3108 South Stonebridge Drive in Norfolk. And as a product of Norfolk Public Schools, it's my pleasure to nominate Simeon Fuller of Norfolk, Virginia, to serve on the Norfolk Public School Board. Mr. Fuller is a veteran of the United States Navy, and he is the owner of a multimillion-dollar business located here in the city of Norfolk called Medical X-Ray Staffing Solutions. Mr. Fuller has also devoted his personal time to tutoring and mentoring children in elementary schools in the city of Norfolk, and he is also the parent of a child of a Norfolk Public School student. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Ambler?
My name is Martha Ambler. I live at 905 Jamestown Crescent in Norfolk, where I've resided for almost 24 years. I am a CPA with nearly 30 years of experience, mostly in auditing and accounting, with a concentration in the nonprofit area. I'm currently employed by the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, formerly known as the Norfolk Foundation, where I serve as chief financial officer. However, a few weeks ago, I announced my intention to retire from that position at the end of July in order to pursue some volunteer opportunities in our community. My husband, Tom, and I are the parents of two Norfolk Public Schools graduates. Both of our children attended Larchmont Blair and Maury. After graduation, they both have gone on to excel at academically rigorous universities. Their public school education equipped them very well for their future academic pursuits and to become good citizens of our increasingly global world. From the time our daughter entered kindergarten until our son graduated from Maury two years ago, our family's commitment to the public school system has never wavered. When given the chance, we always support the public schools by telling our friends and neighbors what good experiences we've had in the school system. But the real motivation I have for seeking appointment to the school board is my passion for the youngest citizens of our community. I want every child in Norfolk to have the same opportunities that my children had, regardless of their neighborhood or their personal situation. I know the challenges facing the school system are complex and numerous. I realize that in this difficult economic environment, difficult choices must be thoughtfully and carefully made. I believe that my unique combination of skills and passion would make me an excellent school board member, and I would be honored if you would consider me for this critical role. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, city council members. I'm Jerry Artis. I reside at 110 Suburban Parkway in Norfolk, Virginia. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you this evening and nominate Reverend Glenn Jones. Reverend Glenn Jones has spent a lot of time in the Norfolk area for over 15 years, working directly with the youth and the children in the school area. He's spent a lot of time putting together a group against gang violence in the Norfolk area. I think that Reverend Jones, being the youth minister of his church and working right in the neighborhood, which is Coleman Place area, would make a great appointment for you to have on the school board.
Thank you. Dan Montague.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the city of Norfolk. I want to nominate Daniel Montague for the school board. Reason why I'm doing this, like I do every year, I'm doing this because I want an elected school board. We need one. Every progressive city that I have lived in in this country has had an elected school board, and we ought to get with the program. Thank you.
Glenn Bonney.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, members of council, Mr. Jones. My name is Glenn Bonney. I live at 6826 Gardner Drive, 23518. I'd like to nominate Jim Driggers. I believe his experience on the board for the past six years speaks for itself. He works full-time. He spends his time there. He's also retired from the military with much training experience there. And he also is a tireless leader in the community, being on the Civic League Board, supporting me in the Civic League for the past seven years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Judith Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Judith Hicks-Brooks. I live at 8041 Jerry Lee Court in Norfolk. I'm here to nominate my son, Clifton Hicks, for the school board. His dad was on the school board before him, and he has listened to his dad for how many years? 16 years. I think he would be quite an asset to the school board. He right now is an adjunct professor at Bryant Stratton College. He's a former prosecuting attorney for the city of Norfolk, working for the Commonwealth's Attorney. I think he would be an asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky Ross.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Ross, and I live at 6830 Orangewood Avenue in Norfolk. I'd like to nominate Cindy Lee Huffman for the Norfolk City School Board. Cindy Lee Huffman is, she carries a business administration undergraduate degree. She carries an MBA in systems management, a certificate of advanced graduate studies in administration from Cambridge College, and also a master's of education from Cambridge College. Cindy has been with Norfolk Public Schools at least from 1998 to 2011, and she soon will be retiring in February, I mean, I'm sorry, July 1 of this year. She's a parent of two daughters that went through Norfolk Public Schools, one at, well, following schools, that is, Git School, Bayview Elementary, Roughness Academy, Meadowbrook, Granby High School, and Stewart Center at the time. Cindy has also been an active member in the American Federation of Teachers, where she served as the executive vice president for a year. And I've also walked the precinct many times with Cindy during election times. So, I can think of no other better advocate for Norfolk Public Schools on the school board than Cindy Lee Huffman. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Hester?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Don Hester. I reside at 3728 Wedgeville Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. And I would like to nominate Reverend Dr. Kirk Houston to maintain his position on the school board. I just wanted to make sure that his name was put in place. We have seen his work, his dedication, his leadership as the current chair, and even his work that he's done in the community. I'd also like to nominate Marcus Powell. He's a resident of the Londonwood Cottage Heights Barrow Park community and a former Marine, retired, working in our area, and has done great work in the Civic League. He's taken great advantage of the work or the sponsored activities that the city provides. So, he's quite aware of what's going on in our city, and has done work in our community as well, and has even provided to some of our schools and classrooms computers that he's been able to receive from GIFCOM, from some of the contractors who work there. He's a great team person. Thank you.
Hey, Don.
Thank you.
Good seeing. I just wanted to tell you that my prayers have been with your father.
Jenny Bobby.
Mayor Frame and members of Norfolk City Council, my name is Jenny Bobby, and I live at 1714 Ashland Avenue in Winona. I'm Norfolk-born and raised, and I'm the spouse of a Norfolk teacher. My 11-year-old daughter, who has autism, attends Granby Elementary. I work full-time for one of Norfolk's top 50 employers, and in my free time, I chair the Norfolk Special Education Advisory Council, which reports to the Norfolk School Board. I'm here tonight to implore council to reappoint Dr. Stephen Tonelson to the Norfolk School Board. There is no better advocate for the needs of Norfolk students than Dr. Tonelson. He is a committed supporter of students with disabilities and our noble teaching staff who instruct them. Dr. Tonelson is a tireless champion of our at-risk and on-the-fringe students and families, and his dismissal from the board would leave a vast hole in the experience level and institutional memory needed for thoughtful decision-making. Please do the smart thing and keep Dr. Tonelson on.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the list of speakers and the names. I have 11 names. We also have a letter from Councilmember Whibley for Wendy Jo Einhorn Brodsky. Does she want her name placed in nomination as well?
Yeah.
All right, so, Brett, if everyone will check me, that gives us...
And I like to put a name in nomination.
Okay, please.
I'd like to put the name of Amber Pickrell in nomination.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, I have 13 names. Is that how many you have? Can you tell?
13, Mr. President.
Okay. I'm going to, are there any other nominations from any member of the council?
I'd like to put in Brad Robinson.
Brad Robinson.
And then Brad, I can, I had gotten some word, maybe some interest.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, I was given the name Matthew Paddock.
Okay, do you know where, we know where Mr. Robinson is. Dr. Robinson, is that...
Yes, Carl Bracken Robinson lives.
You know Mr. Paddock, how to reach him?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, that gives us 13, 14, 15 names. Are there any other nominations? Anyone in the council chambers has any other nominations? Okay. All right, I'm going to read the names to make sure we have them all. Okay, Warren Stewart, Simeon Fuller, Martha Ambler, Glenn Jones, Dan Montague, James Driggers, Cliff Hicks, Cindy Huffman, Kirk Houston, Steve Tomlinson, Marcus Powell, Wendy Jo Einhorn Brodsky, Amber Pickrell, Brad Robinson, and Matthew Paddock. 15 names. Okay. Mr. Attorney, we just need, I guess, then just a motion.
15 names, but you have somebody who may want to add.
Was there a name? I'm sorry. Did you want to add?
Yes, Sherri Taylor.
Okay. Could you tell us your name, please? Could you come to the podium? All right, if you can give us your name and address, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Sherri Taylor, and I'm residing at this point at 2804 Westminster Avenue in Norfolk. I'm very pleased to be here. This is my first opportunity to come to one of your council meetings, and I wanted to nominate myself as a contestant for appointment.
Okay. How do you spell?
Twenty-seven years of teaching.
D-A-Y-L-O-R?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And Sherri is spelled?
S-H-E-R-R-I.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure we have your address as well as your phone number, because we're going to try to do, the council is going to, will try to do, in fact, we will do interviews next week, and we would like to receive resumes from everybody whose name has been placed in nomination, so we can have some information about your background and your experience, and then also, so we can contact you to schedule the interview.
I did give my information at the NWCPC meeting last night with the city manager.
Okay.
Do you want the phone number?
We'll get it from you. The clerk will get it from you tonight before you leave, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that gives us 16 names with the addition of Sherri Taylor. All right, so the motion then is to close the nominations. All right? Okay. Motion is to close the nominations.
Close nominations and public hearing. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 10, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gym parcel located at 980 Rugby Street to Chantel Cravel.
Okay, let me look here. There are no members of the public signed up to speak on this matter, so if you'll call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Chantel Cravel of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk pursuant to section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the attached conveyance agreement dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Again, I want to thank the staff for their due diligence in getting these properties back on the tax rolls. Again, thank you. Where's Mr. Stein? Is he in here?
Anniversary. His wedding anniversary.
Oh, okay, okay. Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 10, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gym parcel located at ES Argon Avenue to Duane Wesley.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter, so if we call the roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Duane Wesley of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk pursuant to section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the attached conveyance agreement dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Again, I'm just joking. All right.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. PH four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 10, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gym parcel located at ES St. Mahal Avenue to Norman J. Friedrich and N. Donald Friedrich. And I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Norman J. Friedrich and N. Donald Friedrich of certain parcels of property acquired by the city pursuant to the state code, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the attached conveyance agreement dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 10, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gym parcel located at WS Bay Palm Avenue to Marilyn Britton and Sylvia J. Britton. And I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Marilyn and Sylvia Britton of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to state code, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing six.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 10, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on a lease agreement between the city and Copy Connection LLC for city property located at 236 East Main Street. And I have an ordinance for that captioned. An ordinance approving a lease agreement between the city as landlord and Copy Connection LLC as tenant for the lease of that certain property owned by the city described as 236 East Main Street, Norfolk, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven.
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 24, 2011, under state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of the city of Norfolk for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of a 10-foot alley that runs between 43rd Street on the north and 42nd Street on the south, parallel to the east side of Bowden's Ferry Road, and by six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval. And I have an ordinance for closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of a 10-foot unnamed alley south of 43rd Street and east of Bowden's Ferry Road. Dispense for the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the public hearings. The consent agenda, there are two matters on the consent agenda. Would any member of the council like to have either one of these matters considered separately? All right, call the roll, please.
Prove the consent agenda, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1.
Mr. Mayor, R1 had an amendment. I passed it out at the closed session, but I neglected to inform you that what we added to it was that members of the Git Civic League asked for a provision stating that a TOD would not ever be extended to an historic zoned area. That provision has been included and is what you'll be voting on tonight.
Right.
We didn't have a closed meeting.
At the informal session, down in the administrative comments, I forgot to mention.
We didn't have any closed meeting?
No.
Okay, we're ready then. Okay.
I have two ordinances for this item, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance to amend the general plan of Norfolk 1992 so as to incorporate policies regarding transit-oriented development and light rail. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Second is an ordinance to amend chapter 10 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk 1992 so as to create the transit-oriented development districts. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R2.
R2 is an ordinance permitting John B. Mayor and Madeline Mayor to encroach into city property at 2534 East Ocean View Avenue with a wood walkway and stairs. Dispense with the charter...
Are we, did we get a chance to talk about that?
Nope.
I'd like to postpone that, Paul. We needed to, that was...
We got the packet, though. We did get that.
I'd like to...
You, two weeks, one week, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Three weeks?
Well, I'd like to know if there's ever going to be an ordinance adopting the recommendation from the committee on...
I thought we had, okay, why don't we continue the matter generally, and we'll try to clear up all of this stuff.
Yeah.
But I agree. I would like to see something that actually, you know, relates to what the committee worked on, and see if that's in fact what we need to include in the ordinance for us going ahead.
Okay, I think we got plenty of that, and we can just give to you. Okay, so we'll just continue.
So, let's get that before this comes to track.
Okay, all right, then we're going to continue the matter generally.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
An ordinance accepting a $17,500 grant award from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management 2010 State Homeland Security Grant Program to purchase hazardous materials, equipment, and training. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance[1716.53] equipment, and training. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. Dan Montague, please. Sorry, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mr. Jones. I am all for you guys getting this grant for emergency management equipment, but I have got an emergency of my own, and that is, I am here tonight to ask you to pass a no-smoking ordinance for all the park spaces in the city. I know that Mr. Pisco has said that you can't do it, but, you know, and I know that we have the Dilbert Law, or excuse me, the Dillon Rule, but the thing about it is, we need to have this ordinance. You are not the first city in the country to pass this ordinance. New York City did it, and New York City has more people in New York City than we do in the state of Virginia. And so if they can do that for the good of our citizens, we ought to be able to do it for the good of ours. I had to walk away from a good-paying job because the smoke, of the smoke. Also, when I worked in oil refineries out west, I had to leave all my smoking paraphernalia in my car because they would not allow it beyond the gates. And the thing about it is, all the guys that couldn't handle it, you know, the no-smoking thing, and anyway, I mean, I was working anywhere from eight to 12 hours a day, six, seven days a week. But the thing about it is, I didn't have to chew tobacco like most of the other guys did. So people can do without cigarettes. And the thing is, we have a good city here. I remember when Dr. Whibley wanted a no-smoking in the bars and restaurants, and everybody came down here and says, "Oh, no, you're going to kill our business." Sunday night at the bank, there wasn't hardly any room on the dance floor because it was a crowd, see? No smoking in there. And so the thing is, we need to do this for the city of Norfolk. Curry Daughtry had a horrible time on the beach over the weekend because some clown lit up a cigar and she had to put up with his smoke. We have fought other battles before for the city, Mr. Pisco, and so anyway, I know you can fight this one. And so I would appreciate it if you would pass a no-smoking ordinance at your next council meeting and have it go into effect the 1st of July because we have some good beach music coming up, and I would like to enjoy a smoke-free area for once. Thank you.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I'm confused. Are we voting on smoking, no smoking in the parks? Are we voting on the-
It's homeland.
R. three.
Homeland, so, okay. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R. four, please.
A resolution granting approval to Eagle Medical Transports LLC, a private emergency medical services company, to provide certain medical transport services in the city of Norfolk.
All right, Alton Robinson, please. Alton? Lowell Morris, I'm sorry.
My name is Lowell Morris, and I live at 218 Glasgow Street, Portsmouth. And I'm here to represent Eagle Medical Transportation. I was just asked to come here and answer any questions that you might have about us coming to Norfolk.
Yep. I, you know, I look at this as emergency transport, and I think about the recent incidents we had, although this is not a bus service, but I'm wondering, I'd like to know the experience of this organization, the age of their vehicles, the driver experience, driving records, and how they'll be, you know, hired, the insurance requirements, especially the liability requirement. If this is going to be an emergency transport, that means they'll be traveling through our city on occasion, you know, at high speeds. And so all of this is important to me, and this has nothing, this application that I see here has nothing about the insurance liability, age of vehicles, experience, driver experience, nothing that tells us about the company.
Okay, sure. I wasn't prepared to have actual figures for you, but I can tell you the following. Generally, 90% of what we do is medical transportation. We're helping folks go to doctor's appointments and dialysis. It's very rare that we answer a 911 call. There's situations in nursing homes where someone falls out of bed. It's not a life-threatening situation. We'll come and do that, but we're not a typical life-threatening emergency flying through the streets. We're 90% medical transportation.
Okay.
If you look at all the transportation companies out there, there's three that are the best. We're number three. Medical Transport is owned by Centura, as you can see, they're everywhere. And then Bond Secures owns First Med. After that, we come next in line. So we have, we're highly recommended, great references. You'll see that our drivers go through more scrutiny than is required. There's several background checks. Our vehicles are very well-maintained. In fact, we, I think, out of the private companies, we have a mechanic that's full-time.
Okay.
But we can provide you with any documentation you want.
I take the thing that threw me off when they say it's emergency as opposed to just basic medical-
We're 90% medical transportation.
All right, thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Adopt the resolution, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R. five, please.
An ordinance to amend and reordain sections 38-2.4 and 5 and subsection C of section 38-5.1 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 relating to secondhand and junk dealer permitting requirements and definitions so as to conform to state code.
All right, Alton Robinson?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor, to the manager Jones. I'm here because I know that you all will probably vote unanimously to adopt this amendment, but I just wanted to bring a different perspective or something that you all may not have considered with this. I know a gentleman, he's a young man, and he collects aluminum cans, and he gets a social security check and food stamps. But at the end of the week, at the end of the month, he has a week left, and he collects cans for his meals. And he said he couldn't go to the scrapyard no more because he had reached a 20-time limit, which I know that this extending his 26 is better. And the convicted felon part, that from seven years to three years is better also. But I was just wondering why someone who was a convicted felon, that it's hard for them to get a job because they are convicted felon, and now if they have to wait three years, they pick up some garbage. Could we do six months?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Is this something that we're doing that, is this what we're doing?
That we have a-
That we could?
We have an existing ordinance, and that the information that I have is that the state used to require that before engaging the business of buying and selling secondhand goods, you had to have seven years from your release as a felon, and it's being shortened from seven to three. But I'm not 100% certain of that. So I've just got the transmittal letter on this, and with the note that it's being amended to comply with the code and shorten the waiting period from seven years to three. So as Mr. Robinson says, this would make it easier for somebody who's released to go into this business, but I'm not 100% certain that we must have the three in our ordinance. But we used to have seven.
Well, one of the things we had talked about is that redemption and that we give people second chances. So if this is something that we can mitigate where they don't have to wait one year.
Three years, anytime.
Or anytime.
Right.
You know, then we need to do that.
And I'm not certain that you have that option. I could find out for you that this ordinance does not have to be passed tonight.
Can we table it, Paul?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Get more information on it.
I was going to ask that it be tabled, too, but since you all are going to table, I think that's real cool, you know, because it's, no, I mean, it's a win. I look at it a win when you have less aluminum cans litter because people are picking them up. And then, not to regulate something that will cause somebody who is a good person that would try to do something to get an honest little bit, not everybody going to go on a dumpster, but some people will. So now what they going to do? Start robbing because they can't get cans? So-
Let me ask another question. Were they checking the folk? What they got?
I mean, you have to have finger, I mean, from what I read, they're going to fingerprint you. You got to get with the chief of police. You got to get a, I mean, you got to do everything except for get DNA just to get aluminum cans? And 26 days, it's 365 days in a year. So after 26 days out of that year, if that person used it as a means of them just getting a sandwich, they can't get a sandwich for the rest of the year because they done used up their 26 days.
So we need to make sure our ordinance is in line with the state ordinance?
That's what we were doing.
That's exactly what we're doing.
I'm trying to do, but Bernard's going to look into it.
And to see if there's any more leniency that we can offer.
Right. A little less regulation and bureaucracy.
Motion is continued generally, then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. This is something that I think we need to talk to our legislature about as well.
Mr. Burford? Continue generally. Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R. six, please.
Can I say something on that, Mr. Mayor, before we-
Which, R. five?
You know, one of the things, right, well, yeah, the one we just left. After discussions that we've had in the informal session a few months ago, I think before anything that deals with a convicted felon comes to us, we've passed that. We've talked about that. That should not exist with this body anymore as it relates to employment or anything else. I hope in the future that the administration will vet that before it comes to us, because we shouldn't deal with issues like that anymore.
I think that the administration has a good understanding of the redemption. It may turn out that this is an improvement, and that's what I'll get answered for you, that we may be reducing the waiting period from seven to three, which would be toward direction you want. And I'll get for you the answer whether you can eliminate it entirely. That will only take a day or two to get answered.
Thank you.
We're ready for R. six, Mr. President.
How's that?
We're ready for R. six.
R. six.
An ordinance to repeal ordinance number 44195 adopted April 5, 2011, and to accept with appreciation the donation of $5,410 to the city from the Hampton Roads Community Foundation in appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds to support library services and programs with a preference for the purchase of additional books, reading, or educational materials at the Pretlo Anchor Branch Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R. seven.
An ordinance to amend and reordain sections 25-648, 649, 650, 51, 654, and 656 so as to add one right turn prohibited, one right turn on red prohibited, one left turn prohibited, two U-turns prohibited, seven stop signs, and trucks of one and one-half tons or over prohibited. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R. eight, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile repair facility on property located at 901 to 905 East Little Creek Road, and by six er vote, planning commission recommends denial.
I'd just like to say, we've worked really hard in Ward Five to take this type of business off of East Little Creek Road.
Now, my question is, because I agree with you, there is, the same organization has a facility at Norview Avenue and Military Highway, and I'm wondering why that one, well, that was already, I guess, zoned properly, but it's a mess. It's a mess.
Which one, brother?
It's Tower City, the one in Military Highway.
Same, same organization.
Right there by the-
They moved after they were torn down from the CVS being built on corner of Little Creek Road. That's where they moved. They want to come back to Little Creek Road.
Oh, okay. No, I don't think-
The track record's not too high.
It's actually in Ward Three.
Right. All right.
Yours, Anthony.
Dispense-
That's why it's getting voted down.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
No.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Mr. Frame?
No. Okay, R. nine, and then, okay.
I think based on the discussions we had in there and then the new potential redistricting, that we ought to continue for two weeks. I think there's people that don't even understand the third proposal. One of our council people doesn't even know if he's included in it, right? So I don't think, I think we meet again with the last week of June, maybe?
Yes.
Give us some time to at least understand the third option and maybe better understand the other two. I think we're reacting, a lot of people are reacting maybe for the wrong reasons to the wrong, you know, and-
I'll agree with the continuance, but if you look at how the wards are drawn and the fact that when we created the direct election of mayor, it gave us five whites on council and three blacks. And not many times have we had votes that have come down according to racial lines. We have been able to sort of work things out so they don't, you know, appear racial. But I would, I'm almost positive that the African-American community would be more comfortable if there were a district that would allow the possibility of a fourth black elected. One day in this city, there would be an African-American elected as mayor, and that would give you, you know, the four-four. So, you know, I So, you know, I will, you know, agree to, if everybody else does in the majority, to continue on it, so we can look at it closely and get a very clear picture of where everybody would be located under the proposal that Mr. Jordan has suggested. But I think we all need to look at the fact that one day we won't be here, and what's best for the city. So whatever you decide in terms of...
I just think we, a lot of people will be reacting for the wrong reasons, and we're not understanding what we're doing, and we ought to give it more time.
I'll go with the majority. If the majority wants to hear it today, we're here, if we won't, we...
Well, let me say, I mean, obviously, there is a good deal of concern about, I have a concern about the fact we're about to, we have something that we're prepared to add to the docket, something called R nine B, that is just a piece of handwritten paper at this point, and I don't ever remember doing that. I mean, just from a process standpoint, we've never voted on a piece of paper that we haven't all at least had a chance to review, and so...
You know, I'm sorry.
But, you know, and if it's, I mean, I'd like to move on to things tonight, but I will certainly agree to continue.
Being naive after the two thousand census, and I had some lines drawn up by Dr. Rudy Wilson over at Norfolk State University, who was probably one of the most well-respected demographers throughout the city. And as I say, being naive, I gave it to my friend, the city attorney, thinking it was gonna go up automatically, as opposed to doing what Mr. Jordan has done, bringing it forward and somewhat, you know, letting it be out there. And the proposal that Dr. Wilson presented in two thousand was this same thing. You know, it was an opportunity, the district would have been fragile, it would have been fragile at best, but it would have given us an opportunity to get another black elected to the city council. And so, with that said, it's up to us to decide whether we wanna continue it or vote it up and down tonight.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible in the next two weeks that Dr. Wilson and maybe a professor from ODU could be part of this? I know it wasn't successful at the state level with a bipartisan commission, we don't have to worry about the partisan part, I hope, but that we could get them together with Rodney and look at that plan and see if it meets the test? I mean...
And who else from the administration? Because early on, I had asked that, just like last census in two thousand, we did have a demographer from ODU and Dr. Wilson, and so whoever else from the administration, and then, you know? Because it's very serious, and... And, you know, I'd like to say that initially, I had, you know, was gonna support the northside move, but now this is so serious, especially the impact in the African-American community. Very seldom do I, you know, go back on my word, which I haven't yet, in supporting Mr. Frame in certain things, but this is a very, very serious issue. It has a very strong implication in the African-American community, and we still don't know, Mr. Attorney, if it goes to the Justice Department, whether they will accept it or not, or do we?
I think that all three alternatives are, you could expect approval from the Justice Department.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'd like to add, if we're gonna table this for two weeks, given the fact that Teresa brought up a very good point, and I think Tommy did too, and we all were kind of concerned about the number of people who showed up at the public hearing and that the input that we got from the public, that push it out one more week just so that we could have, if we have two or three plans out there online that people can go to, look at, study, and give us some feedback, at least give the citizens that one last ditch opportunity, if you wanna call it that, to come in on the twenty-eighth and voice their opinion, or send us an email, or give us a phone call or something before we actually vote on it. Once whatever's going to be voted on is decided upon with the people from Norfolk State and those other folks, we look at the twenty-eighth as maybe a public hearing number two, and get people's input, and then vote on it. What would that be, the first or second? That would be the second...
I'll have a meeting, and then we'll be pushing it.
I just, you know...
Second week in July.
We can do the public hearing here?
Yeah, we can do, I mean, we can do it here. I'm not suggesting that we, you know, have to go someplace else, but we could do it here, but, I mean, if we're gonna put together another proposal, and we're gonna table this one, and we're gonna, you know, further study Rodney's proposal, then I think people need to have the opportunity to look at it, weigh in on it, other than just us looking at it and weighing in on it, and at least get public opinion on it if it's a third proposal that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be voting on. And if nobody contacts us, then, you know, we at least put it out there for people to be able to give us their opinion.
All right, so we've had one public hearing, is it, do you think you wanna do it again? A second public hearing?
The next one would be a circus.
Yeah, but we're adding another proposal. I mean, if we add a third proposal to it, then, you know, Rodney's proposal wasn't even...
Added at the public hearing.
Right, and if we take it and add it for something that we're gonna vote on, then we need to at least give the public an opportunity to give us their opinion, because at this point, no one can speak on, I mean, from what I'm understanding is that once we have a public hearing on it, then it's tabled for conversation from the public. So if we're, if we're tabling it and we're bringing it back for a vote, then the citizens ought to have an opportunity to give us their input, that's all I'm saying. If it's, if it's just, you know, they come and sign up for it as an agenda item or a non-agenda item or whatever, but if we, if we are actually adding a third proposal, then we need to at least get, allow the citizens to give us their opinion.
Well, they would have that opportunity when they come down here and it shows up on the docket.
Well, they, that's not necessarily true, because people were told today that they couldn't speak on it because the public hearing was closed.
Paul's right, it was, it's gonna...
Yeah.
It'll be...
It'll be a circus.
It will be a circus. I mean, I'd rather...
I think, I think it's important that, that we get a clearer picture of the third proposal that shows where each council person is now, where they would be if that were adopted, and that would influence probably a lot of where people vote, or how people vote. But I'm not in favor of really a public hearing, because it'll be a circus, it'll be a zoo, it'll fall down a corner of racial lines, and I think that as long as we get a good understanding of it and people get a chance to see the picture of it.
I think most importantly, Mr. Attorney, is what does the Voting Rights Act ask us or tell us to do? Because if a plan has been presented at a public hearing, you know, is there guidance from the Attorney General's office that tells us what we're supposed to do and how we're supposed to handle it? No, there's not. It's within the discretion of the council that, you had the public hearing and you considered it, but there's no rules of the road about how to treat the various proposals that you could get, so that it's your judgment, your discretion. I remember reading on one of the documents on our website that said that if a proposal's been presented, that you're supposed to give two weeks' notice to the public to be able to come in and see it, and I believe, because this was a new proposal, that actually has some value to it, then we, it should be considered by the public, it needs to be a notice. You know, I'm not aware of that, but that, that would have to have a window on it at some point in time, or you would, you'd be at risk of never finishing if every time you received a new proposal, you had to take two weeks. But, you know, I can check to see if there's any guidance like that, that I'm not aware of any.
Well, my motion was to continue so that the council could become more educated as to the third proposal. It was brought up at the public hearing, I'm not in favor of another public hearing.
I'd second that, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more about it.
That's just for the education part, because I think a number of people are acting, for whatever reason, and not have given it the proper amount of thought and study, and I think we need to do that. Our constituents are free to contact us by email or whatever.
I don't think any proposal has five votes here tonight, as far as I can...
Why would like, I do agree with...
If, if one fails, where are you on R nine A?
I wrote yes for mine, and I wrote no, no, on the other two.
So that's...
Because frankly, this is genuine, if I'm to switch my vote over to north side, when I've been, took the time with Tommy to come up with our own.
What were you gonna say, Teresa?
That they're all gonna be four for four.
I just was saying that I, I supported your idea of having somebody, experts coming in to talk about the implications.
All right, well, you don't have to do any...
I'm prepared to go over here, just to get the darn thing over with. I agree with Paul, I think it'll be very difficult after that.
I think we'll be voting on a mo, potentially voting on a plan that nobody understands. I know I don't. So if it, if the first two lock up, I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel educated enough on the third one, and I think the...
But what I, I think Paul makes a lot of sense here. I mean, I really do, on the notion of, and I, that it will, it will break down along racial lines. I mean, the fight right now basically has been, but you split the north side or the other one, and now it's morphed into something bigger than that.
Right.
You know, and I don't want that to happen. I don't, I don't want, I think that could cause some, you know, some damage. I know it could.
You all are longer in the tooth and have been through it before, we haven't. Ours is a fairly simple plan, and frankly, one of us may be running citywide in three years anyhow, between the two of us.
None of us might even be here.
Right.
Might put us all out.
Might be hit by a light rail.
I would, I don't wanna joke about it.
I'm just letting you, we may not be here for one of the two of us.
I know, I know that, I know that too, but it's...
Well, you got the simplistic side over here, and you have to be sensitive as well. I mean, you sit at a body that's five to three, you know, to, to, if you're gonna, if you're gonna listen to it, a better understanding, or, like I said, voted up and down today. And like I said, my first...
And we'll have them again.
Vote was gonna be with this north side.
Councilman Nguyen made a motion, and I seconded it.
But we don't need to assess, but let's, let's think about it, and let's just talk out loud to help ourselves a little bit. There are, it looks to me like there are not five votes for any of these three proposals tonight. And the question is, I mean, are we gonna be helped by delaying this thing for several weeks and then really, you know, stand the chance of really, we've not, you know, I think causing some divide in the city? I don't want that to happen. Dr. Webly, you know, Paul has referenced it, we've seen that sort of stuff.
I agree with that too, but on the other hand, not addressing issues doesn't solve anything either. You know, I'm sympathetic to your issue, but if in fact we have three proposals and one of them hasn't been delineated, I don't see any harm in delaying a vote for two weeks. I'm not saying if you all are uncomfortable with having more public input, as long as we have somebody explaining it to us, and everybody on council knows exactly what all three proposals mean, I don't see where we lose waiting for two weeks. Now, we may, we may be sitting on, nobody, nobody has a majority then either, but we don't have it now, so what do we have to lose to wait two weeks?
The other part of that is that we didn't have any unrest when it, when we added a eighth person. The community came together, and we're better for it. So I just think that the due diligence that goes into this, the sensitivity part, to vet it, come back here and look at these plans.
Okay, so are we...
But I don't think we have a public hearing again.
Continue two weeks, is that okay? If we just get it? All right, what is that, what is the date, then?
The twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
But I would hope then in two weeks, we have the lines drawn, we maybe have at least expert opinions, if they're not here with us, at least written opinions, but something that clarifies the impact and perhaps, you know, also agreeing, or if we can get some credentialing that the Justice Department would approve all three, although I believe you, Bernard.
We, they won't give you that.
Well, you know what?
That early.
So maybe an ex, more assurance that it looks pretty good. And I still believe that even when we vote on it on the twenty-eighth, that people should be able to speak on it. They were told they couldn't speak tonight, and there are people who wanted to come and speak because they didn't know there was a third plan, they didn't know, you know, that we would even be considering a third plan, and, you know...
We weren't considering a plan until tonight.
They didn't know that it wasn't...
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't know.
They didn't know the plan was...
Not in the third plan as such, but in...
So if we have five people came down to the public hearing with five different plans, you know, so then what?
I'm just saying, if we are considering a third plan and we're tabling it, I just think that at our next formal meeting, when we vote on this, people should be able to speak on it. People were told today that they couldn't because both the plans were presented at the public hearing.
They wasn't shown.
No, they weren't, they...
They were handed out.
But, no, I mean, typically, what we do is, when we have public hearings, and we have this for the purpose that we can get everybody in, in one place at one time, and they all know that they've come to talk on a special, on a certain issue, we do it, I mean, that has been our practice, and so once we get to, to a final vote, that we don't give people a second bite at the apple. I mean, that's just, we don't let people come down and, and do that twice. I mean, that's, so...
You have a public hearing, and then that opens it up for somebody to come down with four more plans. What I'm saying, Mr. Jordan came down there understanding that you could present a plan at the public hearing.
Well, couldn't the public hearing just be on this plan, since it was, I mean, we do public hearings on the time on all, on individual issues, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take new ideas, that it would just be on this, because it was presented in the proper way.
All I'm saying is that people should be able to comment. We don't have to have another public hearing, all I'm saying is that they should be able to comment, since we're considering something else, they, people get to comment on whatever it is that we're considering a vote on, and, you know, if Marcus had come to us with a five million dollars removed from the budget on the night that we were going to vote on it, people would want to have a comment about that, because that would be a change.
Okay, so the motion then is to continue R nine and R nine A for two weeks, okay? To the twenty-eighth, okay?
Nine B.
And we don't, I mean, we wanna see what the nine B looks like, I mean, it's not on our calendar, but it's, all of the, all of the proposals that the council's gonna consider, included nine, I mean, R nine, R nine A, and a R nine B will be continued for two weeks, okay?
Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
All right, we're also voting, that's right, we're on the school board that night, too. Okay.
One additional item, it's a letter from the city auditor requesting confirmation of Ms. Barbara Reeves as an assistant city auditor two effective June twenty-seven, twenty-eleven. And the recommendation is to confirm the appointment. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.